Agradezco a cada uno de ustedes por su interés continuo en el estudio de la Palabra de Dios. Lo considero un honor y un privilegio. Me siento fuera de lugar. Me parece que ustedes pueden enseñarme más de lo que puedo enseñarles. Pero estamos en esto juntos, y todos somos estudiantes, no hay un académico entre nosotros, ni un académico de la Biblia, sino un estudiante de la Biblia. Veamos al Señor en oración. Nuestro Padre, le agradecemos esta oportunidad para estudiar la Palabra de Dios. Y oramos por la anointea del Espíritu Santo para poder enseñar la Palabra de Dios en esta clase. Oramos por cada uno de nosotros, por la anointea del Espíritu Santo, por la plenitud del Espíritu Santo, para poder aprender y aplicar la verdad a nuestras vidas. Dios, Padre, por Cristo, en el que oramos. Amén. Bueno, puedo enseñar, pero no puedo causarte a que aprenda. El aprendizaje es una cosa individual que tenemos que aplicarnos a cada uno, ¿no es cierto? Y comenzamos una escuela cristiana en nuestra iglesia hace muchos, muchos años en el sur de Texas, y se llamaba ACE School, puede haber oído hablar de eso antes, Accelerated Christian Education. Esto pone al estudiante en el foco en lugar del maestro, y está solo. Bueno, él no está realmente solo, él tiene asistencia del maestro, pero tiene que ser motivado, y motivarse a sí mismo, y también a otros para estudiar y aprender. Y es realmente un proceso educativo excelente. Y espero que esto sea lo que hacemos, aplicamos a nosotros mismos al estudio de la Palabra de Dios. Si tu carro está bajo el combustible, elimina la capa del combustible del motor, deténgela en la cuarta parte del combustible y dale el combustible al motor. Quisiera que esa fuera la forma en que podríamos aprender. Pero no hay manera de que pueda desmontar la capa sobre tu cabeza ni la mía, y derramar una cuarta parte de conocimiento de la Biblia. Sería maravilloso si esa fuera la forma. Así que tenemos que trabajar en ello, y tenemos que estar motivados para estudiar. Lo que me gustaría hacer, sé que hemos puesto la base para estudiar la Biblia, y todavía estamos en ello hoy, pero hay mucho de la Biblia ahí fuera, mucho de la Biblia. Y así tenemos que progresar. Y lo que me gustaría hacer es terminar con una revisión de los primeros 11 capítulos. Ahora, hay muchas cosas en los primeros 11 capítulos del libro de Genesis que no hemos cubierto. ¿Estoy hablando en voz alta?
Sí, señor, sí.
Está bien. Muchas cosas que no hemos cubierto, y así no queremos tocarlas. Cualquiera de las cuales podríamos pasar un año entero. Quiero decir, hay ciertas cosas extraordinarias que ocurren en los primeros 11 capítulos del libro de Genesis. Hay la creación, hay la instalación del matrimonio, hay la caída del hombre en el pecado, hay la promesa del Mesías, hay la descarga de Adam y Eva del jardín de Edén, y hay la descendencia de Cain en el capítulo 4. En el capítulo 5, hay la descendencia de Seth. Y es muy importante que entendamos la diferencia entre el capítulo 4 y el capítulo 5. Y luego, en el capítulo 6, hay los hijos de Dios que vienen a las hijas de los hombres, y ese es un pasaje muy significativo. Y luego hay el inundación, el construir el arco y el inundación. Y luego hay la división de la tierra y las naciones. Y luego hay la torre de la Biblia, y todas esas cosas. Y simplemente podríamos pasar el resto de nuestras vidas en cualquiera de esas cosas particulares. Así que lo que quiero hacer es solo tocar estas cosas y llegar al final del capítulo 11, para que la próxima vez que nos encontramos podamos empezar con otra área de estudio, y así progresar a través de la Biblia. Pero estas cosas son importantes, y son preguntas que surgen. Y me preguntaron una pregunta esta mañana, nunca había tenido esta pregunta antes. Y así, constantemente surgen nuevas cosas que estamos preguntando y que vamos a saber. Me gustaría decir que, bueno, permítame hacerte la pregunta: ¿qué significa el word Genesis?
Comienzo.
Comienzos. Significa los comienzos. Genesis incluye el comienzo de todo, excepto el comienzo de Dios. ¿Por qué no nos dice sobre el comienzo de Dios?
Él no tenía ningún comienzo.
Perdón.
Él no tenía ningún comienzo.
Él no tenía ningún comienzo. Ahora, es difícil para nosotros tomar estas pequeñas computadoras que llamamos cerebro, para tomar una nota de eso. Podemos imaginar el futuro, pero ni siquiera podemos imaginar el pasado, igual que nunca hay un fin al futuro de tiempo y espacio. Solo que no hay un fin si giramos y miramos en la otra dirección del comienzo. Y igual que habrá un día después de mañana, igual que había un día antes de ayer, y podemos seguir retrocediendo. Podemos imaginar el futuro, pero no podemos tomar nota del pasado. Tenemos que darse cuenta de que Dios es Dios, y hay muchas cosas que no sabemos, muchas cosas que no sabremos. Y me gustaría que miras en tus Bibles a Dúrón, capítulo 29, y versículo número 29. Y esto, espero, será lo que necesitamos tener en cuanto a nuestra actitud. "Las cosas secretas pertenecen al Señor, nuestro Dios; pero aquellas que son reveladas, pertenecen a nosotros y a nuestros hijos para siempre, que podamos hacer todas las palabras de esta ley".
¿Cuál es el versículo? ¿Otra vez?
Ese es el versículo número 29, capítulo 29, del libro de Dúrón. "Las cosas secretas pertenecen al Señor, nuestro Dios". Ahora, sabemos que Dios es omnisciente, es decir, él sabe todo. No puedes enseñarlo una cosa. Él ya sabe todo lo que debe saber. Y no hay manera de que podamos imaginar o ni siquiera concebir la gran mente infinita de Dios. Por lo tanto, tanto de lo que Dios sabe será para siempre un secreto. Pero utiliza el word revelado. "Aquellas cosas que son reveladas, pertenecen a nosotros". Ahora, estamos preocupados en nuestro estudio de la Palabra de Dios por las cosas que son reveladas. Hay algunas cosas que nunca he sido capaz de reconciliar juntos. Una es la soberanía de Dios en conexión con la responsabilidad del hombre. Y sabemos que ambas son verdades. Y mucha gente quiere tomar la soberanía de Dios y descartar la responsabilidad del hombre, y viceversa. No queremos tomar la soberanía de Dios porque eso hace preguntas sobre quién es Dios y qué tiene derecho a hacer. Bueno, no importa lo que sea, Dios tiene derecho, y es correcto que él haga lo que hace, y diga lo que dice, y piense lo que piensa. Ahora, un día, por supuesto, tendremos una mejor comprensión cuando entramos en la presencia de Dios. Puede que ya haya mostrado este versículo, pero este es Efesios, capítulo número 2, y versículo número 7. "Que en los años que vendrán, él pueda mostrar la excedente riqueza de su gracia en su amabilidad hacia nosotros a través de Cristo Jesús". Ahora, si Dios decide alguna otra persona para enseñarnos en la clase de Biblia cuando lleguemos al cielo, o si Dios simplemente lo revela directamente, es otra pregunta. Pero nunca dejará de aprender. Nunca dejará de descubrir las maravillosas cosas sobre la maravillosa gracia de Dios. Ahora, quiero que te vuelvas a Romanos, capítulo 9. Y te voy a dar una línea de tiempo de lo que Dios está haciendo, ha intencionado hacer, y hará en el planeta Tierra. Una línea de tiempo completa en un versículo. Y eso es en Romanos, capítulo 9, y versículo número 28. Donde la Biblia dice: "Porque él terminará el trabajo". He tenido la experiencia de empezar cosas que no podía terminar, pero no Dios. "Él terminará el trabajo y lo cortará en justicia". Ahora, solo piensa en todo el alcance de las cosas. Vuelve atrás al antes, la creación del mundo. Y nos dice esto en el libro de Isaías, capítulo 14. Nos dice cómo Lucifer, uno de los seres creados de Dios, rebelió contra Dios. Decidió que quería ser Dios, quería ser adorado. Y era una persona muy inteligente, parece que las personas inteligentes nunca serían estúpidas. Pero esto fue algo muy estúpido para él imaginar que podía superar a Dios. Pero el pecado originó en la mente y en el corazón de Lucifer. Tan grande fue hasta que afectó a todos nosotros aquí. Y sin embargo, Dios no debe ser desaparecido en lo que ha decidido hacer. Y Dios tiene un propósito. Tiene un propósito en todo lo que ha hecho. Pero dice que él terminará el trabajo y lo cortará en justicia. Ahora, Dios comenzó todo en justicia. Y no vamos a entrar en preguntas vainas, como por ejemplo, si Dios, en su omniscientia, ya sabía que Lucifer iba a cometer pecado y rebelirse, ¿por qué Dios nunca hizo que Lucifer comience? Ahora, hay una respuesta a esa pregunta. No tengo la respuesta, pero puedo confiar en quien tiene la respuesta, porque las cosas secretas pertenecen a Dios. Y en este libro y en el estudio de la Palabra de Dios, vamos a aprender esas cosas que nos han revelado. Ahora, hay suficiente para mantenernos ocupados. Hay suficiente que ha sido revelado para que nos hablemos de ocupados. Pero no tenemos que preocuparnos por otras preguntas como esa, porque sabemos a Dios. Y Dios es Dios, y no hay otro que él. Y hemos sido salvados por su gracia, y vamos al cielo, y pasaremos el resto de la eternidad aprendiendo sobre cuán bueno Dios ha sido para nosotros. Ahora, él terminará el trabajo y lo cortará en justicia. Finalmente, esta tierra va a ser reemplazada, e incluso el cielo mismo va a ser reemplazado. Tendremos una nueva tierra en la que duerme la justicia. Ahora, después de eso, nunca tenemos que preocuparnos de nuevo por otro Lucifer, por otro pecado. El propósito de Dios en estos 6,000 y pronto serán 7,000 años de su trabajo en el planeta Tierra es que pronto se convierta en historia, y viviremos en su presencia para siempre y para siempre. Las cosas anteriores ni siquiera serán recordadas de nuevo. Y estoy seguro de que todos nosotros hemos hecho cosas y dicho cosas que queríamos que pudieran salir de nuestra memoria. Sabemos que Dios lo ha sacado de su memoria, y nos ha perdonado. Ha castigado cosas hasta que el oriente es del oeste. Y no recuerda las cosas contra nosotros más, porque están bajo el frágil sangre de Cristo. Pero todavía están en nuestro cerebro deprimente. Bueno, un día, ni siquiera vamos a recordar estas cosas más. Muchas cosas que he hecho, muchas cosas que he dicho, lo que quisiera que olvidara, y eventualmente lo olvidaré. Pero nota lo que dice en este versículo, Romanos 9:28, la última parte del versículo. "Porque un trabajo corto hará el Señor sobre la tierra". Ahora, eso es todo lo que necesito en cuanto a aquellos que dicen que hubo un día de miles de años en el versículo 2 del capítulo 1 de Genesis. No tengo que preocuparme por eso, porque miles de años no es un tiempo corto. Pero 7,000 años en comparación con un millón de años es solo una luz de rayo. Y estamos al final de 6,000 años de eso ahora mismo. Lo que Dios comenzó en Genesis, capítulo 1, ha estado durante 6,000 años, y estamos al final de ese periodo de tiempo. Me parece que los seis días de la creación ilustran los 6,000 años que hemos pasado. Y que los otros 1,000 años representan el día del tiempo del reinado milenio de Cristo. Es por el Señor, 1,000 años y 1,000 años es un año. "Porque un trabajo corto hará el Señor sobre la tierra". Estoy feliz de eso. Y estoy seguro de que los patriarcas y los hombres de Dios y las mujeres de Dios y los jóvenes de Dios en el pasado no vieron lo que tú y yo vemos hoy, porque no había sido revelado todo. La Palabra de Dios llegó al hombre progresivamente. Él no dio todo lo que quería. Durante miles de años, nos estaba dando el Antiguo Testamento. Y cuando dice que Apollos era un hombre que era poderoso en las Escrituras, se trata del Antiguo Testamento. No tenía el Nuevo Testamento. Y tú y yo tenemos tanto Antiguo como Nuevo Testamento. Y qué maravilloso es que Dios nos ha mostrado el fin desde el comienzo. Y nacimos y vivimos en, no puedo probar esto, pero lo creo de todos modos, la última generación. No puedo ver un periodo extendido de tiempo más allá de lo que vivimos. Tengo que confesarte que, como he estado estudiando en el libro de Genesis para enseñar, y mi propio estudio personal y privado, he estado revisando y revisando y revisando diferentes pasajes de la Escritura en el libro de revelación. Estoy atento a lo que veo y cuán pronto es llegar al pasado en el planeta Tierra. Y esta generación presente no... Buenas tardes, Daniel. Esta generación presente no está preparada para eso. Estoy feliz de que la transformación de nuestro cuerpo va a pasar en un momento y en el desgaste de un ojo, y no tendremos tiempo para hacer ningún tipo de segundo pensamiento, ya va a acabar, y podremos manejarlo. No podíamos manejarlo como estamos ahora mismo. "Él terminará el trabajo y lo cortará en justicia, porque un trabajo corto hará el Señor sobre la tierra". Allí tienes una línea de tiempo del propósito completo del planeta Tierra en un versículo de la Escritura. "Él terminará el trabajo". Ahora, eso hace una pregunta: ¿qué trabajo? Bueno, podemos pensar en miles de cosas que Dios ha hecho y logrado en la historia del planeta Tierra estos últimos 6,000 años. Pero hay un trabajo en particular que define la Biblia santa. Y eso es, después de la caída del hombre, la restitución del hombre, la redención del hombre. Y encontramos eso en esa gran promesa de la Escritura que ya hemos leído en esta clase muchas, muchas veces. Y esa es la primera promesa messiánica, y Mesías significa sacerdote, que está en Genesis, capítulo 3, y versículo 15. Donde Dios, después de la caída, dijo al cerdo: "Y yo emite entre ti y la mujer, y entre tu sed y su sed, y se les brujirá tu cabeza, y tú se les brujirá su cabeza". Y en Galates, capítulo 4, y versículo 4, la Biblia dice que en la plenitud del tiempo... Ahora, me olvidé de tomar mi memoria, Phil, así que tendré que leer este versículo. Pensé que te impresionaría mi coria. Galates 4, versículo 4. "Pero cuando la plenitud del tiempo fue calma, Dios envió a su hijo, hecho de..."
¿De una mujer?
De una mujer. No una mujer y un hombre, pero hecho de una mujer, sin un hombre. Eso es la nacimiento de la virgen. "Haced bajo la ley". Eso es la cumplimiento de Genesis, capítulo 3, y versículo 15. Ahora, vamos a ver hoy en nuestro estudio continuo de los primeros 11 capítulos del libro de Genesis, cómo Satanás trató su mejor para evitar que eso suceda. Tenemos lo que Dios está haciendo a través del Antiguo Testamento hasta el momento de la llegada de Cristo. Pero además de eso, vemos claramente lo que Satanás está tratando de hacer para evitar que eso suceda. Si estuvieras trabajando en un arco alto, que estaba alto, la borda de él estaba alta sobre el suelo, y comenzabas a caer y a deslizarte, y sabías que cuando llegaras a la borda ibas a caer 40 pies tal vez, estarías haciendo todo lo que pudieras para evitar caer hacia abajo. Eso es lo que está haciendo Satanás, está deslizando hacia abajo, y está tratando de hacer todo lo que puede para evitar que eso suceda. Dios, en el versículo 15, ya he dicho esto en otra sesión, Dios, en el versículo 15 de Genesis, capítulo 3, ha dado a Satanás lo que es su plan de juego militar. No lo harías con un enemigo, pero Dios lo hizo. ¿Por qué? No importa, porque Dios es Dios, y él está en control. Supongamos que fueras a la guerra con un enemigo, y ese enemigo no pudo hacer nada excepto lo que le diste permiso de hacer. Eso pone todo el alcance en una luz diferente. Pero hoy tenemos guerras, y por cierto, la historia del planeta Tierra es una historia de guerras. La primera ocurrió en el cuarto capítulo del libro de Genesis, y veremos eso en un momento. Pero esto es lo que Dios está haciendo. Vuelve a Daniel, capítulo 9. El libro de Daniel, capítulo número 9, y mira el versículo número 24. Aquí hay otra línea de tiempo, en un sentido, que encontramos en las Escrituras. Daniel 9:24, y estudiaremos esto en profundidad un poco más tarde. "70 semanas se determinan sobre tu pueblo y sobre tu ciudad santa". Tu pueblo es Israel, el pueblo judío. Tu ciudad santa es Jerusalén. Por cierto, Jerusalén pertenece a los judíos.
Amén.
Has oído el término zionismo. ¿Qué es un zionista? Un zionista es alguien que cree que Jerusalén pertenece a los judíos. Por esa definición, habiendo sido estudiante de la Biblia, soy un zionista. Pero aún más que eso, Jerusalén pertenece a Dios Jehová. No pertenece a Allah o a cualquier otro dios falso. Pertenece al único y verdadero Dios. Jerusalén pertenece a Dios porque Dios eligió ese lugar como el lugar para poner su tabernacle, su templo. El eligió ese lugar como el lugar para poner su nombre allí. Y así es todo el enfoque de la dificultad en el Medio Oriente hoy. Pertenece a Dios. Y Israel no merece eso, porque han pecado contra Dios. Deben ser lidiados, y serán lidiados en el periodo de tribulación. Pero no pertenece a nadie excepto a Dios. Ahora, 70 semanas se determinan sobre tu pueblo y sobre tu ciudad santa. Ahora, eso significa que 70 semanas es un periodo de cálculo profético, y vamos a entrar en eso cuando lleguemos al libro de Daniel, y veremos por qué se llamó 70 semanas, aunque es un total de 490 años. Pero hay una razón para eso. No es solo trabajo de suposición. Está establecido en el libro de Levíticas. Tenemos que tener Levíticas para entender Daniel. "Para terminar la transgresión", número uno, "y para terminar los pecados", número dos, "y para reconciliarse por la iniquidad", número tres, "y para traer la justicia perpetua", número cuatro, "y para cerrar la visión y la profecía", número cinco, "y para anointear al más santo". ¿Quién es eso?
El Señor Jesús.
Ese es el Señor Jesús Cristo. Y el word anoint es la definición para el word Mesías. Mesías significa al anointido. Y el único big one, y estoy muy feliz por eso. ¿No es una bendición que tú y yo, y otras personas que conocemos, pero no Cristo es su sacerdote? Aunque somos una pequeña minoría, una minoría extremadamente pequeña de la población total del planeta Tierra. Qué maravilloso es que Dios nos ha permitido conocer a este mismo aquí. Ahora, este es el propósito que Dios dio en la creación del planeta Tierra. Está bien, si tienes tu libro con ustedes ahí, que te di una encuesta de profecía, una encuesta de profecía bíblica, abre la página número 5, y usaré esto como una guía para nuestra discusión hoy. Ahora, ya he hecho la declaración de que no soy especialista en la profecía. Un tercio de la Biblia es profecía, pero no ignoramos los otros dos tercios. Y en este curso queremos hacer todo, no solo los dos tercios, sino también el uno tercio. Preparé un curso en español, y lo que tienes en tu libro es una traducción al inglés de ese curso. Y dejaré, si el Señor quiera, el 11 de agosto, y voy a un instituto de Biblia en el estado de Jalisco, México. Y voy a enseñar este curso. Tengo dos semanas para enseñarlo, tendré todos los días, todo el tiempo de clase que me han dado. Y voy a enseñar este curso. Y eso es lo que estamos usando aquí. And that's what we're using here. I have found that this course is, even though it's about prophecy, it is a good way to envision the whole concept of the Bible. It is a very good outline for learning and understanding the Bible. So if you take this book and we'll study it closely, if you have questions, I'll be glad to help you with them if I can. And if you'll take this book and study it closely, the entire book, and you're on your own as far as that's concerned, we'll be referring to things in the book, but I recommend your personal study of the book. Some of y'all already have. But this will give you a basic outline of what the Bible is. And when you get through looking up all these Scriptures and studying all these Scriptures, it's not gonna happen in a short period of time. But when it occurs, you're going to be like Apollos. You're going to be mighty in the Scriptures. And that's the purpose that we're meeting together here on Saturday mornings for our Bible place. Now, on page number five. "The prophecies with their respective fulfillments lead us to certain evident conclusions. They establish and confirm the following truths: Number one, the validity of the prophecy of the word of God. I know of nothing that is a better proof that the Holy Bible is the word of God than the fulfillment of prophecy." Open your Bible, please, to Second Samuel. Second Samuel, chapter number 23. And what we're going to do when I give out a reference, you can either underscore it in your book or write it down in your notebook. But then I'm going to look for that verse. And here's, here's the reg, the rule that we're going to go by. If you find the verse before I do, then just read it out, out loud. And if I find the verse before you do, I will read it. Does everyone have Second Kings 23, verse two? Who will read it?
Second Kings or Second Samuel?
I'm sorry. Second Samuel, chapter 23, and verse number two.
"The Spirit of the Lord spake by me, and his word was in my tongue."
I had indeed turned over to...
Second Kings?
Second Kings. "The Spirit of the Lord spake by me, and his word was in my tongue." What a wonderful promise that is. And then who will read for us? Second Peter, chapter one, verse 21. Second Peter, chapter one, verse 21. First person to find it, just read it out loud.
"For the prophecy came not in old time by the will of man, but holy men of God spake as they were moved by the Holy Ghost."
Okay, Samuel was one of those, right? Let's read verse one of Second Samuel 23. I'm about to get ahead of myself here. "Now these be the last words of David. David, the son of Jesse, said, and the man who was raised up on high, the anointing of God of Jacob, and the sweet psalmist of Israel." Samuel didn't say that. David said that. Let's make that correction. "The Spirit of the Lord spake by me, and his word was in my tongue." So much of what the Bible says in the book of Psalms is prophecy. Prophecy specifically about and concerning the Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. So we study prophecy, and we get confirmed that the Bible is the word of God. And number two, the only true God is active and has a plan for the purpose and purpose for planet earth. This you, you, you can't escape when you read through the Bible, starting Genesis and read all the way through. You cannot escape that. And number three, God's word is irrefutable and eternal. Now beloved, since there is only one true living God in the universe, and since he has written the word of God, and since we know that to begin with, it behooves every one of us to be faithful in reading the word of God. This is a special letter that God himself wrote, chose the very words that he put in it, and he wrote it for you. And he wrote it for me. He wrote it for every person individually that we might study the word of God. Now turn to Job, chapter 24 and verse one. Job, 24, verse one. First person to find it, read it out loud. "Why, seeing times are not hidden from the Almighty, do they that know him not see his days?" That is a good question. That speaks to our own conscience, and it's just exactly what we've been talking about already. To answer that question, why do they not see his days? Because they don't spend time reading his word and thinking about what God has said. "Why, seeing times are not hidden from the Almighty." Why are they not hidden from the Almighty? Because he's the designer of them. He has planned them, and he executes them. So why should we study prophecy? And here's a list of six things. I'm gonna leave it up to you to read those on your own. We have to move on. What Bible prophecy teaches us? One, the concept of God, that he is alone in the universe, and these verses are so important. It'd be good just to get by yourself and read these one at a time and really think deeply about what God has said. He is holy. He is sovereign. Number two, the concept of Satan. Sin originated with him. His greatest desire is to be worshipped, and the malignancy of the great, "I am. I will arise. I will ascend. I will take the place of God." And he desires to be worshipped. Satan indwells the Antichrist in the book of Revelation, chapter 13. The Antichrist is a man, but that man is possessed. Satan lives within him. And that's the thing that he does. That is what the abomination of desolation is. It is when Satan in the Antichrist puts himself in the temple of God, making himself to be God, demanding worship from everybody. We could get into that, but we have to be careful not to start chasing rabbits in our study. So Satan desires to be worshipped. And there's much talk about rebuilding the third temple. Actually, it's the fourth, but we won't get into that right now. That's another rabbit trail. But I don't like to call it the third temple. I like to call it what it really is. It is the tribulation temple. It is the tribulation temple. And when Satan puts himself there, Second Thessalonians, chapter two, in the person of the Antichrist to be worshipped, that is the abomination of desolation. Now, as far as I can understand the word of God, that is the last straw. God permits Satan to do whatever God sees fit to permit Satan to do. But when the Antichrist puts himself in the holy of holies and claims that he is God, that is the abomination of desolation, and the desolation means the axe is about to fall. And so we have this in the book of Revelation, all of the 21 enactments of God's judgment upon sinful man. Twenty-one. The seven seals, the seven trumpets, and the seven vows. Oh, it's an awful thing. And then the study of prophecy teaches us God's strategic plan from the beginning of time. He will deal with sin and Satan on planet earth. That's the whole scope of the matter. God is dealing with sin and sin. And you and I have the opportunity not only to observe what God is doing, but we have the opportunity to participate in what God is doing. Because what God is doing as a holy God is bringing judgment against sin on planet earth. Now the thing about it, judgment is not all that he does. Grace and mercy is also what God does. Now we're participating in what God is doing by repentance of sin and faith in the Lord Jesus Christ as our personal Savior and Lord. So we see this in, in next class time, we will start in chapter 12, and we'll study about God's covenant with Abraham, and how that in him all families of the earth are blessed, and we are indeed blessed. We're not Jews, but I'm so glad that God decided to include Gentiles in his plan of grace and mercy. There are three things that God did with the Jews. He chose them as a biological means by which to bring Christ into their... God becomes incarnate in man biologically, and this happens through the Lord Jesus Christ, through the nation of Israel. People that hate Jews, the antisemites, they just are blinded to what God did through the Jews to be of benefit to them. And then literally, God used the Jewish people to give us this book, the Old Testament and the New Testament, and as a governance. God would use them in the future. God would use them in the future in governing planet earth. When we once again have no longer a democracy, no longer a dictatorship anywhere in the world, but we'll have a theocracy, a government of God, by God, and for God, just with the children of Israel during the time of Moses. But it'll even be better than that. There are some rules of Bible interpretation, and we're going to some of those as we go along. One of the rules of Bible interpretation is the rule of first mention. The first time something is mentioned in the, in the Scriptures, that sets the stage for the future. Well, I think probably right now would be a good time to have our first little break. We'll take five or 10 minutes, and then we'll come back. And usually, as it has been in the past, we will not take as much time in the second session as we do in the first. So if you need to go to the restroom or whatever, just take a few minutes. The main events. We've already talked about creation, and we have talked about the creation of man and the fall of man. And chapter three deals with how astute Satan was in tempting Eve. He must have known something about the difference between a woman and a man. He didn't try to tempt Adam. He attempted Eve. Perhaps the lady is more gullible than the man. I'm sure I'm not choosing the right words that I need to be using. But then he emphasizes, it emphasizes the weakness of man, because Satan tempted Eve, but Adam was not tempted. He went in full knowing, fully knowing what he was getting into, but because he didn't want to lose Eve. And I'm sure that as a husband, I give in to my wife a lot because I want to consider her. And I think that's good, but Adam certainly did wrong by listening to his wife. He should not have in that case. I think we do well by listening to our wives in a lot of cases. But I think that the whole scope of the thing, and I don't want to lose sight of this as we think about this lesson today, the whole scope is the fact that God gave the promise of the Messiah in chapter three and verse 15. We keep saying that, but we see this all the way through the Old Testament, all the way up to the time of Christ. Now in chapter four, we have in the first eight verses, the difference between Cain and Abel. Cain was the firstborn, and then Abel was born after that. And they both knew about God, and they both made sacrifices in an attempt to approach unto God. But the difference in their sacrifices illustrates to us the true way to know Christ as Savior. And this is also borne out in the book of Hebrews, chapter 11. We'll read that in a moment. "Abel was the keeper of sheep, but Cain was the tiller of the ground." Chapter four and verse two. And you've probably heard this all along, and so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time with this. But it has often been brought to our attention that Cain's sacrifice was his vegetables. And I love vegetables, but they have their place. They don't have any blood in them. The sacrifice that Abel made was a sacrifice of blood, and that's what God was looking for. The life of the flesh is in the blood. But Cain, his, his approach to God was by works, by good works, not by works of righteousness, which we have done, but according to his mercy, he saved us. This is brought out so clearly in the book of Hebrews, chapter 11. Hebrews, chapter 11, verse number one. "Now faith is the substance of things hoped, while the evidence of things not seen. For by it the elders obtained a good report." Through faith, we understand. And this is another key to understanding the Bible. Faith is the requirement. "Through faith we understand that the words were framed, worlds were framed by the word of God, so that things which are seen were not made of things that do appear." This is the difference between creationism and evolution. Evolution must start with something already in existence. Creation begins with absolutely nothing, absolutely nothing but God. But in verse four it says, "By faith Abel offered unto God a more excellent sacrifice than Cain, by which he obtained witness that he was righteous, God testifying of his gifts, and by it he being dead yet speaketh." In other words, God is still using Cain, I'm sorry, still using Abel as an example of salvation by grace through faith. Now in the remaining part of the fourth chapter of the book of Genesis, we have the descendancy, and we have the line of the generations that followed Cain. That wasn't good enough. Cain, having murdered his brother Abel. Cain, having offered unto God salvation by works, was rejected by God. Cain, having offered unto God salvation by works, was rejected by God. And so, God started all over again in chapter 5 by giving to Adam and Eve another son, whose name was Seth. Now, in your book, you will find each one of the names of the patriarchs. Adam, and not Cain, but Seth. And how old they were when they had their first child? How old they were when they finally died? How many total years? And this is what we mean when we say the antecedent patriarchs. Not only those before the flood, but those after the flood, up to the time of Abraham. Because with Abraham, God began a new God began a new covenant with Abraham in order to bring about his purpose on planet Earth. Verse 4 of chapter 5. "And the days of Adam, after he had begotten Seth, were eight hundred years, and he begat sons and daughters." Now, this is the answer to the age-old question, where did Cain get his wife? He had to marry one of his sisters. That's a very, that's a no-brainer. And then, we come over to chapter 6. Verse 1. "And it came to pass, when men began to multiply on the face of the earth, and daughters were born unto them, that the sons of God saw the daughters of men, that they were fair." In other words, they were beautiful. "And they took them wives of all, which they chose." There's a lot of different opinion. I'm going to give you my opinion, which just so happens to be the way it is. You know what controversy is? Controversy is the confusion in the minds of the misinformed. Controversy simply means that the other opinion is always wrong. But having said that, I sincerely believe that I understand this. And I respect the opinions of other people. But I really believe that the sons of God that are mentioned here were fallen angels. Not all of the fallen angels. There were a lot of fallen angels. God gives, in the book of Revelation, an estimated number of the angels. And it is tremendously large, hundreds of millions. And the Bible says that they're also called stars, that when Satan was cast out of heaven, he drew a third of the stars with him. So, a third of the total number of angels are fallen angels. And if the, if the total number was in the hundreds of millions, then a third of that is still a very large number. So, not all of them that cohabitated with the daughters of men, not all of them were fallen angels. The Bible makes it very clear that there are two types of angels. There are the fallen angels, and there are the... Let me back up, I'm about to confuse myself. There were angels who are in chains because of a special sin that they committed, and that there are angels that are not in chains. You remember reading in the New Testament, the book of Mark, about the demoniac of Gaderah? The hundreds and thousands of demons that inhabited that man were not in chains. They were on planet Earth, they were not in hell. But the Bible tells us that those angels which committed this special sin before God were put in chains, reserved to the day of judgment. They're in darkness, and this is borne out in the book of Peter and other places in the scriptures. But what a terrible thing it was. "It came to pass, when the men began to multiply on the face of the earth, and daughters were born unto them, that the sons of God..." These are created sons of God. Angels are created sons of God. In the book of Job, chapter number 1, the Bible tells us that there was a day when the sons of God came to present themselves before God, and Satan also came among them. Now, you have expressed your theory about something, some of you have. I want to express my theory about something. This is something that I believe, I think there's indication in the scriptures, but I cannot be really dogmatic about it. In Genesis 3:15, when God told Satan about his seed, the seed of the woman was going to bruise his head. Satan had no idea of who that was. Even Eve herself probably had a misconception. As I read the first verse of the fourth chapter of the book of Genesis, it appears to me that Eve thought that Cain was the answer to that promise. Satan certainly didn't know. And he's putting up all these smokescreens. He's putting up all of these detours. He's putting up all of these oppositions to God, all the way through the Old Testament, one right after the other. But one by one, he's finally convinced that's not the Messiah. And when we get to the book of Job, this is a court day in heaven in which the sons of God come before God to give an account. And Satan also came, came also among them. "And the Lord said unto Satan, 'Whence comest thou?'" Then Satan answered the Lord, and said, "From going to and fro in the earth, and from walking up and down in it." Did you know that Satan is still doing that? Not for the same purpose that he was then? Because he's already found out who that, that seed of the woman is. But he's looking for you, and he's looking for me. He knows that he cannot take us to hell, but he knows that he can also destroy our life. He can destroy our testimony if we allow him to do so. But back to the original thought here in the first chapter of the book of Job. Job said, "From going to and fro in the earth, and walking up and down in it." Satan was looking for something. He's looking for something. He doesn't know who the seed of a woman is. He's thinking, "If I can find that person, I'm going to kill him before he kills me." And that's what he eventually tried to do with the Lord Jesus Christ when Christ came and Satan realized that that was the seed of the woman. And so, he was looking for someone. And God, and I don't want to be too free with my description here, okay? This just is a way that appears to me. God is sort of smiling to himself, because he already knows the end from the beginning. And he knows what a consternation is in the mind of Satan. And it's almost, if I can say this without trying to add something to the Bible, this is just my imagination. It's as if God says, "Satan, I know where you've been. And I know why you've been going to and fro and up and down in the earth. You're looking for the seed of the woman." And then, God says, "Hast thou considered, my servant Job, you're looking for the seed of the woman?" Okay, let me have you, have you thought about Job? "That there is none like him in the earth, a perfect man and an upright man, one that feareth God and assuith evil." What about him? Now, for the best of me, I'm not trying to add something to scripture, but this, I can't help but think this is in the background due to the fact that all of these things that Satan has tried to do to outbest God. Then Satan asked of the Lord, and said, "Dost Job fear God for naught? Hast thou not made an hedge about him, and about his house, and about all that he hath on every side?" Well, you and I know, to bring this whole thought to a conclusion, you and I know that Job was not the Messiah. In a lot of ways, he could be considered to be a type, a foreshadow, an example of a Messiah. But it says, "The sons of God came before God." These were created beings. And then, of course, as we were reading in the sixth chapter of the book of Genesis, they're described as the sons of God. Now, as a result of that, look in chapter 6 and verse number 5. "And God saw that the wickedness of man was great in the earth, and that every..." Notice that word. "...every imagination of the thoughts of his heart was only evil continually." here we see about the depravity of man. How bad, lost is man? Well, this certainly came to a summit or a zenith in the sixth chapter of the book of Genesis more than ever, because after these sons of God cohabited with the daughters of men, there was a time of terrible violence in the world. So, what is Satan trying to do here? He is trying to corrupt the entire race. He's thinking, no doubt, "If I can't find the person who is the seed, then I'm just going to mess up the whole race. I'll just get all of them. I can't destroy them, but God can, and I'm going to fix it, so God won't have any choice but to destroy them all." And it was almost right. The thing that he failed to understand was that God is also a God of grace. And in a world where every imagination of the thoughts of the heart of man was only evil continually in such a time as that, there was one person who found grace in the sight of the Lord. What was his name? What was his name?
Noah.
Okay, I've got you an answer here on the front, and I want to hear from the back rows, too. Noah. Noah found grace in the eyes of the Lord. I cannot get over such an engineering feat that Noah did. 450 feet long, 45 feet high, 75, no, I'm confusing cubics with feet. But it was 450 feet long, and it was three stories high, and it was very wide. And it had enough space for a whole bunch of boxcars to put animals in and all that stuff. We won't get into the theory of this thing, but God did it, no matter if he did it on a plank, if he just did it on one plank of wood. But that thing made out of timber. With the, they didn't have any skilled saws. They didn't have any of the stuff that we have today to make it with. It's amazing. 120 years in construction. 120 years. And that was 120 years that God gave the human race space to repent. One of these days, I'm going to do a message on space to repent, because it's found all through the Bible. God, in his grace, gave the human race 120 years for repentance. Well, we know what happened, and the great flood came. And if you want some basic information on the ark and the flood, that will be a blessing to you, then go up to Kentucky to the ark that Ken Ham and his crew has made. How many of you have seen that? Okay, two of you have seen that. Well, it's amazing what God did to preserve, through Noah and his three sons, just one of those, Shem. And from Shem came the line of the seed of the woman. "And I will put immitate between thee and the woman, between thy seed, which has to be the antichrist, because his name is the Son of Perdition, and her seed, and it shall bruise thy head, and thus shalt bruise his head." That is a very primordial text in the Holy Scriptures. Well, let's come on over, due to the fact that we're running out of time. And then, there was a man by the name of Peleg. That's very unusual for a name. I'm glad my name is not Peleg. But the Bible says that in his days was the earth divided. And I should like to call your attention to Genesis, chapter 10, verse 25, and also verse 32. Now, some creationist scientists agree with me, and others do not. And I'm not real dogmatic about what I'm about to say, but this is as it appears to me. In verse number 25, the Bible says, "And in the Eber were born two sons; the name of one was Peleg; for in his days was the earth divided." Now, here we have the word "earth", and we have the word "divided." Now, look at verse number 32. "These are the families of the sons of Noah, after their generations, and their nations. And by these were the nations divided in the earth after the flood." So, we have two more words. One is the word "nations", and the other is the word "divided". Now, here is my consideration, using Strong's Dictionary Hebrew Concordance Dictionary. I just want to point out what these words are. In verse 25, for the word "earth", we have word number H776. "H" stands for Hebrew. If it were a word in the New Testament, it would be "G", Greek. But this is the Old Testament. And that word is defined as being land, field, ground. We'll make a comparison here in just a moment. And then the word "divided" is Strong's Concordance Dictionary, number H6385. And that word means "split" or "divided". Based on this information, I personally am persuaded to believe that there was a physical division of the land. I'm not alone in this belief. There are some creationist scientists who believe the same thing. There are other creationist scientists who do not necessarily believe it. But if you take a map of the Atlantic Ocean, north and south, you see that there is North America to your left, and Europe to your right. And there is South America to your left, and Africa to your right. And it's almost as if these are pieces of a puzzle, and you can slide them back together and make one landmass out of all of those. This is what I'm persuaded to believe happened, based on these words. I'm supported in my belief by the word "nations", which is H1471, and it means "gentile", "heathen", and "people". And the word "divided" in verse 32 has a different Hebrew word. And that word is number 6504. And it means "spread", it means "separate", and it means "scattered". I see both a division of the physical earth and a division of the nations of people upon the earth. Now, when you come over to the 11th chapter, we have the Tower of Babel. And we see that God confused the language of the people. Because what they were going, they were making a one-world government, unified under the Tower of Babel, which was not God's true plan of salvation. And God confused their language. I don't know what all was involved in that. I don't know what all generations of people there were. I don't know which or how many languages occurred at that time. I do know that even since then, there have been lots of other languages that have developed. Because there are literally thousands of languages in our world today. I have here a book. It's called an Ethnologue of the Languages of the World. And from the introductory pages, it actually begins on page 10, and it goes all the way through to page 928. You see this book? 928 is the last one, and 10 is the first one. So if you subtract nine from 928, you have 919. 919 pages. And this book was prepared by an organization that studies languages all over the world, and has missionaries that go out and translate languages, translate the Word of God into languages. Just look at this. All of these are languages. Now, there is some repetition. For example, English is one of the languages of England. It is also one of the languages of the United States of America and Australia. So you have English that is repeated. But that doesn't happen so often, because here you have the languages of the world. And who speaks them? And which countries have which different languages? It's just absolutely amazing. On one of these, I counted them. There were 22 different languages on one opening. This blows my mind. This blows my mind. I want to close by turning to the book of Matthew, chapter 28, and verse number 19. "Go ye therefore and teach all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Ghost." The word "nations" in this verse is the Greek word "ethnos", comparable to the word on this book here, Ethnologue. It's talking about ethnic people. It's talking about language groups. Nations there does not mean governments, like the United States, and Germany, and Swaziland, or whoever. It means language groups, ethnic groups of people, the nations. The amazing thing is that God gave 11 men, who were basically illiterate as far as training in languages is concerned, gave these 11 men the commission to carry the gospel into all these worlds and all of these places. And so that's the reason that it was necessary on the day of Pentecost for all of them to be filled with Holy Spirit at the same time. Now, with only nine of us left, but we still have that same responsibility. I have been faltering today, and slow of speech. I so relate to Moses when God called him to go down into Egypt. But I hope that something has been said that will start your motors to turning, and cause you to think deeply when you open the Bible, the Holy Bible, and start to read. So we're going to turn a little class right now. Actually, we have our benediction. I'll still be here if you have questions, if you want our opinions. I'll be glad to hear your opinions, too. Our gracious Father, we thank you for these brothers and for their interest in the Word of God. Help us, our Father, to dig deeply into the Scriptures, and to know what God is doing in His Word, in Jesus' precious name.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you for being here.
Amen.